Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 28th, 2024, City of Calabasas regularly scheduled council meeting. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Krouw, council members Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as our city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication, public comment. When you are called to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Boy Scout Troop 127.
Color guard, advance. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, salute. Two. Color guard dismissed. Audience at ease.
Thank you very much to Boy Scout Troop 127. May I have a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We met in closed session prior to the meeting. Does the city attorney have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session and considered three items. The first, conference of real property negotiator regarding 23075 Holland Highway. And second, conference of legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. For those two items, the city council met all five, provided direction to staff and council, and took no reportable action. I'm sorry, on that one, item two was just a four. Councilman Krouw was recused. The council also met all five on item three, conference of the real property negotiator regarding 27040 Malibu Hills Road, Calabasas. There too, all five council members met, provided direction to staff and council, and took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to start the evening with a fire department update. I'd like to ask Chief Drew Smith to provide an update.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Thank you and the city council. Appreciate your support as always with your fire department. Your fire department is motivated, healthy, eager to respond. So we're maintaining that good workforce. We've been busy, as you know, with the recent rains throughout the area with the potential mudslide. So it's been very active within the Santa Monica Mountains. So hopefully that our residents are doing their preparedness. We have another storm coming in this weekend, so it's not going to be as big, but it still has potential due to the saturation that's out there in the hillsides, which is also going to promote as we go into the summer. So that leads me into our defensible space inspections that we'll be conducting starting in May. So residents should be getting notices on those. So we, your firefighters will be going out and conducting those inspections through May and June. And I know within the city of Calabasas, we get really good compliance. And any questions that need to be answered, there's great information on our LA County Fire Department website or your jurisdictional fire station that can handle any of those needs. Sandbags are available at your local fire stations if you need that. And going into this rain season, we'll still call it, we're above average for this time. And so how does that lead into the next? The next is, as we know, that Mother Nature turns off the sprinkler system, then it gets into spring, and then summer. So does that promote the vulnerability for all of us here for wildfire? The answer is yes. So that's why we're going to look at the timing for the defensible space, which is generically called brush clearance, that we've known for years. So we try to time that so our homeowners don't have to do it twice. So we have to dance with Mother Nature, and then we can get the homeowners the good timely, measurable timeframes to get their defensible space done. With that, it's very light on what I have, so I'd really like to see if there's any questions for me.
I'll start down this way. Are there any questions?
We were a fire family. I know I've mentioned it before. So I just admire the force being out there, working and being ready when anything happens. Of course, it's not going to happen to rain, but it could be in some other area. So thank you so much. Just knowing that you're there at the ready at the moment we need you is great satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you for the support. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chief, for being here. We appreciate all the hard work everybody does. Thank goodness we've had all this rain, although, as you mentioned, that leads to other issues which we all have to deal with. Our city's been proactive in dealing with the potential landslide or rockslide or flooding issues. But we know that when the rains stop, when the summer comes and the fall, that's going to be a bigger challenge for all of us. So please let us know what we can do. Come back. Let us know what we can do as a community, as a city, to be, and I know everything's on the website already, but what else we can do to be proactive to protect our city. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Peter?
I too want to say thank you for coming out and sharing with us tonight. I have had recent communications with insurance companies regarding defensible space, and they seem to be asking for a little bit more than the fire department does. I know they're all good practices, but could you clarify what the fire department is looking for in your inspections? Are we allowed to still have wood chips within five feet of the house?
So, kinda. So we, this, there's been controversy within the zero to five foot. The fire department, per the fire code and best practice, have always been able to have residents comply if there is combustibles within five feet. We know that best practice shows that wood chips within five feet is an ember receptive bed that contributes to those small fires that has the potential to structure loss. So going to the insurance companies, insurance companies can write or not write whoever they want. So they don't look at a complacency from the fire department and say, okay, we're going to insure that house. They can take their own risk assessment on what they'd like to do for their vulnerability for their insurance company. So what do we look for? Can you have ornamentals around your house? The answer is yes, you can, per the fire code as it states today. However, we can write within that five-foot zone, that 30-foot zone and up to 200 feet, based upon how the manicuring or how much vegetation is around the home. So it doesn't have to be vegetation. If we notice that somebody has a bunch of their pallet collectors, let's say, or their, hey, I want to get rid of this old wicker furniture, but it's stacked up against the home and I just haven't taken, that's something we would say, hey, this is what we're going to need to have removed. Any dead wood that, where you have a tree that is not healthy and it has a lot of dead wood, we would ask to be limbed up. So there's certain things that we look for to reduce the probability of something proximal to your home that needs to be removed and/or thinned out. So as far as it being a blanket that there's nothing within five feet, we're not there yet. I know that that law is still in flux, let's call it. And then once the state makes a decision on that, then we have to be the implementers behind that. Hopefully that answers.
That does. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
James?
Thank you very much. I didn't have any other questions.
And I just wanted to say thank you. And I wanted to add, I've had some questions from residents who are new to receiving the brush clearance letter, and Megan has been really helpful in explaining why. So we're going to get that out citywide. Just I think a lot of people have questions of why in the last year or two am I now receiving this when I haven't in the past?
Right. And so what information we have, we'd like to have that unified message with the city of Calabasas. And then any of the site-specific needs that residents have, we will be more than happy to go through there and help them with that endeavor on that. And I'd like to add one thing, is that we did a great video on equine and horse rescue and evacuations. And I don't know if it's up on the website, but I know it's gonna, we just went into production. I don't know if it's up yet. Not yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? They're still cutting all my edits, I think, is what it is. Or they're bleeping out everything I was saying. Hey, you can't say that on a video. So anyways, it was a great time with Debbie Larson, and we'd had some great information. I'm looking forward to that coming out. So it gives them best practice for why we do what we do and how horses play a role in our daily lives and what we can do to best protect them and such, so.
Well, thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't have any speaker cards on this presentation?
None, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Now, we're going to go down. So tonight, we are lucky enough to recognize our outstanding city employees for their service, their long-term service. We're so grateful for the contributions that our staff makes every day. I have to, our residents even comment how amazing our staff is. And one of the best reasons to live in Calabasas is to have devoted staff on a day-to-day basis. So each of my colleagues will present to an employee. We're going to start with Gabe Endriola.
Is Gabe here? So a little bit about Gabe. Am I coming in okay? Okay. A little bit about Gabe. Gabe started at the city in 2018 as a combined building inspector and code enforcement officer. Despite the challenges of first starting during COVID-19, Gabe reported to work each day and performed his duties, including onsite building inspections when most people were working remotely. Gabe always works at the highest standards. He's committed, honest, sincere, and always looking for a way to say yes to help out whoever he can. He has excellent attention to detail and specializes in electrical systems, which is why he inspects some of the most complicated electrical projects in the city, from $30 million mansions to new commercial buildings. He's an asset to the city of Calabasas, and we are proud to have him part of the team.
Here, Gabe. Next is Tatiana Holden with 15 years.
Tatiana joined the city in 2008 as an associate engineer in the Public Works Department. Her dedication to the city was evident right from the start as she successfully managed major capital projects and led transportation-related initiatives. As Tatiana's experience grow, grew, so did her expertise, and she was promoted to senior engineer in 2014, and promoted again to deputy public works inspector in 2019. Tatiana's interpersonal communication skills and steady demeanor were on full display as she guided the Public Works Department through staffing turnover and retirements in 2022 and 2023. The entire department relied on Tatiana then and still relies on her presently for guidance and support. She is an invaluable asset to the city, Public Works Department, and most of all, to the community. Thank you, Tatiana, for all you have accomplished and all you continue to do.
Next up, Annie Kredilian.
Annie started as an office assistant in 2008, was promoted to assistant of the city clerk in 2017, and rose to her current role as executive assistant to in the city manager's office in 2019. For members of the public, this means that if during the last 15 years, you called city hall for assistance, filed a public record request, or needed to get into contact with a council member, Annie was the one who made it happen. Likewise, for city staff, Annie is known as a no multiplier of efforts, whose organizational skills, professionalism, and proactiveness assist in coordinating the city's various efforts in operating a well-run city. Annie's excellent work, positive attitude, and commitment to the city make her a role model for others and invaluable member of the city's team. Congratulations.
I just wanted to add that the city council would not be able to do what they do without Annie. Next up for 20 years is Monica Schinder.
Oh, wow. Be careful with that. Yeah, you can bring it for the picture later on. Great. So Monica's been with the city since 2003. In fact, she used to issue permits by hand in the old city hall. During her 20-plus years at Calabasas, she's had many roles, starting as a receptionist, quickly advancing to the building official's executive assistant, then a permit technician, and now the permit center supervisor. As the permit center supervisor, Monica is like a maestro, coordinating the review of building permits with multiple departments and external agencies. It's a complicated process that she makes look easy. Monica is the front line of the city, often helping people find the right person from each department to address their needs. One of the things among many that makes Monica the fabulous employee that she is, is her passion for her coworkers. She's always concerned for the success of her teammates and goes the extra mile to help. Our staff and residents are lucky to have Monica running the permit center. Congratulations.
And unable to attend tonight is Cedric Henry in our finance department, who has 15 years of service. Congratulations to Cedric. Luisa Baran, I'm afraid I'm going to miss Berna. Luisa in finance with 20 years of service. And a big thank you to Arvin Petros, who is making sure that our meeting is running tonight. He is upstairs and has 25 years of service. So thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to everyone and not just our staff who received these honors tonight, but to all of our city staff for everything they do every day. Thank you. Kinden, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. It's wonderful me to hear the stories of each of these employees, especially how they've started in different positions and then, over the years, have progressed into different responsibilities. And that's one of the things that I really appreciate about this group but all of our employees is their willingness to take on new responsibilities, to grow, to develop, and to mature, not only in their skill set, but also in their responsibilities to the organization. So thank you to each of them.
And I don't, thank you, Kinden. I don't have any speaker cards. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We're going to go on to new business. First item is consideration and approval of appointments of Matthew Husan. Husseinus, okay. Commissioner Matt. And Kartik Netar. Well, Matt is from council member Albrecht, and Kartik Netar is council member Shapiro, to the Planning and Communications and Technology Commissions respectively. Do any of my colleagues have questions for commissioner, commission nominees? I don't have any speaker cards, but are there any, do Ed or David want to say anything?
Yes, I've known Matt for quite a while, and so appreciative of his accepting this position. He's dedicated to the city. He's already served on commissions. I think he's got a long life ahead of him with city work. And I know you're going to be a great, great addition to the team. So, thank you.
Thanks. David?
Yes, and congratulations, Matt, in advance. I know you, I know you've been ready to do this, so I know you're ready even more so. And I just want to say, I'm very excited that you're stepping up today, tonight, and going to be part of the CTC Commission, and really, someone with roots in the city, young family, and ready, ready to take charge and really hopefully make some positive changes as best you can, given the nature of the CTC Commission and what they can and can't do. But I, I know you're going to have some great ideas. We've talked, and really excited. And thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of Matthew to the planning commission and Kartik to the communications and technology commission?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do the oath now? You're going to repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I.
Aye.
State your name. Do solemnly swear.
Swear.
That I will support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
The State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations to both of you. Do, if you want to make a comment, you can, either of you?
Yeah, sure. First of all, congratulations. Kartik, welcome. This is a great day for me to accept this because it's a day that we're celebrating staff. It's because of staff that I'm not completely, a complete nervous wreck going into the planning commission. I take it very seriously. It's quasi-judicial commission. Matt Summers and I went to the same law school. I look forward to your guidance and help. And thank you all. Thank, thank, thank the council for just being somebody I can, everybody I can look up to. I mean, individually and as a body, it's, it's truly an honor just to, just to help in whatever way I can. You know, I love being commissioner. I love this city. I've lived, you know, Davis, San Francisco, Paris. This is the place I want to be. This is the place I feel comfortable. And thanks for letting me serve. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you as well. And thank you guys very much. It's an honor, and I don't take it lightly. I'm, I'm excited to kind of volunteer my time and to serve, serve the city, frankly. We have a young family, and I want my kids to come back here when they're adults and be proud of what their parents have kind of built and called this home, and then hopefully future generations too. And a proud community member and now a proud commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. David?
I was just going to remind Kartik that you promised if you were going to be on this commission, you'd follow the mayor's request and desire to have cell service through the whole city by the end of the year.
Any other comments? Just thank you both for stepping up to serve. We're happy to have you both. So thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to council announcements. Mayor Pro Tem Krouw.
Well, I have a couple of announcements. First of all, I would like to announce that on March 7th, there is a community listening session on homelessness. That's something that you can participate in remotely at 10:30 a.m. And if you're interested in that, you can get information and sign up at homeless.lacounty.gov. And I also want to announce that on March 16th, we're having our own community center grand opening. That'll be open at 8 a.m. Lots of activities. You can come on out, wear your athletic wear, because we have activities for you to do and for the entire day. Those are free, free of charge to come and explore the center with us. And at 12 o'clock, we'll be having a, a grand opening dedication, if you will. And we look forward to seeing you all there.
James?
Yes, and to add to that, recreation classes are now open for registration for the community center, and the memberships are open for previous members, and also to the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center waitlist. They will be open tomorrow. For the general public, this will be open on March 8th. So there is additional information on our city's website. If you want it, please go to the city's website and see it. And we hope to see many of you come back to the community center who have not been there for four years. And we hope to also have a lot of new members as well. Thank you.
Ed?
Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. I meant to remind everybody, election day is March 5th. The turnout has, this, they're expecting a record low in California. So a lot of people have not voted. We have vote centers open. Maybe, if you'll indulge me, the city clerk can tell us where our vote centers are and just other options for voting.
Sure. We have Founder's Hall is a vote center, 11-day vote center that is open already. It'll be open from 10 to 7 until March 4th, then on election day, 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. The tennis and swim center will hold a flex vote center on March 2nd from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. We also have four-day vote centers at AC Stella and the water district, and also Cambria Hotel. You can drop off your ballot. We have a ballot drop box in front of city hall where you can drop off your ballot if you don't want to, if you completed at home and just drop it off. So you can do that as well.
Thanks, Mari. Ed?
I'm reminded I didn't put my I voted badge on. I'll put it on next council meeting. So I do have a couple announcements, and they're basically save the dates. The Los Virginas Municipal Water District is, has prepared a screening for a movie called Flames to the Ocean, the Woolsey Fire retrospective. It's on March 7th from 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock at the Regency's Theater. I've been told a lot about it. It's an evening that'll include short introductions, a screening of the film, and a mixer afterwards, and it's free. So I think just sign up on the website. You can go to the Los Virginas Municipal Water District and do that. We also have another save the date for the acclaimed Calabasas High School Theater Department. They're featuring Something Rotten, and that's going to start on February, tickets go on sale February 15th already till the 30th, and there are seats reserved for seniors. And I'm sure you'll enjoy it. It's $18. I've enjoyed it many times with my wife. It's a great evening. The Chamber, Calabasas Chamber, their lunch is on this coming Thursday, March 20th, sponsored by UCLA Health. It's at the Cambria Hotel. So it starts at 11:30. It's a good time to meet some of the doctors that will be stationed in that hospital. And lastly, the EV Commission or the Environmental Commission is having its, tomorrow night, it's going to be at the Calabasas Swim and Tennis. They're having an event. They have it every year. And the theme of this year is And the theme of this year is really surrounding about environmental initiatives in Calabasas. So, I hope everybody looks forward to attending it. Thank you.
David?
Okay. Just following up on that announcement, the two announcements, the environmental forum tomorrow night at the Swim and Tennis Center begins at 6. And the Calabasas High School Play, March 19th to the 23rd, is a very funny, wild play called Something's Rotten. One last item, everything else has really been mentioned. The pro tennis tournament. Calabasas has an amazing pro tennis tournament where you can go up front and see the players who may be number 150 or 200 now, but later on, you'll see them at the U.S. Open, you'll see them at Wimbledon, and it's a great opportunity. That's March 18th to the 22nd. That's it. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I had one more that I forgot to mention here, and that is coming up at 11 o'clock on Tuesday, March 5th, there is an International Women's Day luncheon. And it's important to mention because our own mayor, Alicia Weintraub, is one of the honorees that'll be featured there. It's a great discussion for any women interested in politics, in leadership roles, in role models like our own mayor here. So, it's a great event. And if you're looking for more information, Mike McNutt at the Water District can provide all the details for you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And all of our announcements have been made. I just wanted to add, a few residents have contacted me about mail theft. They've put checks in like a regular USPS mailbox in Old Town, Calabasas, and had some checks stolen out of the mailbox. So, if that does happen to you, you need to file the information with the U.S. Post Office. Here, and I'm gonna read the link. It's actually, it's kind of hard to read, but, let's see. Because mail theft is a federal crime, the city does not have any jurisdiction, but on the, you can go directly. It is www.uspis.gov and you can make a report. And if you need to have a sheriff's report taken because of what was stolen in the mail, you could call the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station to have a report taken. But just be cautious when you're putting things in the mailboxes. Make sure there's no sticky tape or anything that is out of the ordinary. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oral Communication Public Comment. I have one speaker card. Are there any other cards?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, the first speaker, or the only speaker, is Omar Mada. Mada?
Hello. Is this where I come to?
Yes.
I don't know how to do any of this, so just tell me if I'm doing it wrong.
And as I got your card, I realized that.
I just saw your email.
Yes, it was sitting in my outbox, so.
Okay, so I need to give my name. My name is Omar Mada. I live in Calabasas. As you probably worked out, I was not born here. I was born in England. My family came here 10 years ago. We could've gone anywhere in the States and we chose California. And then we narrowed it down to Calabasas because you guys take great care of this place. And I want to start by saying, thank you for this place looking fabulous, feeling so safe, and being just a wonderful place to be. I have a question. My son loves to play soccer. We live near AC Stell. AC Stell is not in your jurisdiction, as I think you just said in your email. You're creating lots of lovely, beautiful parks, the Dog Park, Walnut Park, I think it's called. There are others around. We would love to have a place to kick a ball around where we don't have to get in a car. Now, here's my question. It's a very simple one, and I'm probably being very stupid in just asking, but is there any way, because I know that AC Stell once upon a time was an open space, and I know there was a joint agreement between, I think I'm right in saying, LVUSD and the city for joint use, I think? I'm curious about that. I'd love to get more information about that joint agreement, which I know ends soon from possibly Erica or someone, please. But my dumb question, I'm sure it is a dumb question, is, is it bonkers to pay for a janitor and/or insurance so that kids can kick a ball around at AC Stell at the weekend? If you've got two big, beautiful fields, I know some people rented out. We, the parents, our kids, would love to be able to just bike down there. Obviously, if people rent it out, they're not gonna compete for that space. Obviously, there are liability issues. I did ask the school about it and asked various people about it. The least good answer was about dog poo. That, I don't think we want to be stopping kids playing worldwide because of dog poo. So, my dumb question is this. Could we possibly, well, one, could I have a look at the joint agreement? And I should say that I've got a bunch of parents who, we were organizing a website and petition and everything, but we're coming to you humbly just asking what we don't know and what we need to learn about and how we could possibly help with this issue so kids have a place to kick around a ball because, ooh, my timer, because the World Cup for soccer, football, where you use your feet, no sarcasm intended, where yes, it was, is coming here. And kids need to play all the time, all day, every day. If they could possibly play at weekends there at AC Stell, if we could possibly pay for a janitor and/or insurance, that'd be much appreciated.
So, we're not allowed to comment, to public comment from up here during a meeting, but Erica, right there, can be in touch with you. And Kindon's copied on the email.
Great.
This is our city manager, so he can respond back, but as I mentioned in my email, it's not a city facility, it's a school district facility, but staff will be in touch.
So, Kindon and Erica will be.
Kindon and Erica are your people.
Hello, my new friends. Okay, so now I shut up and go away?
You can go and they'll be in touch. Or you can stay, but you can watch from, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Now, we're gonna, if there are not any other members from the public, we're gonna move on to consent items. Does any of my colleagues wish to pull any consent items?
Four and six, please.
Four and six. Any others? Okay. Let's go over four and six.
Four. I have questions on four.
Yeah.
So, on four, a couple things stand out to me. I know that we don't have rental, anything more than rental registration, but as I recall, every year Avalon Bay always sticks out as a huge increase. I think last time it was like, like 25% or some, it was like a huge number. And the justification in the report, I guess they have to say why, is something like they're renovating the apartment. I mean, that's not really a justification. That's they're renovating the apartment and it's going way up. So, a couple things on this. One, I'm concerned, we don't have any kind of, not enforcement mechanism, but just any way of expressing displeasure. Second thing I'd like you to consider, because this year it's 16.8%. The other thing I'd like you to consider is you only give averages, you don't give medians. And what that means is there are one number which is way higher than the next one down. The others are fairly reasonable requests or reasonable increases. In fact, one of them's like less than a percent. But the number of, when you report an average, really makes it look like rentals are going up when it's really only one place that's driving that huge increase. So, next time, can we get a median in addition to an average? And also, can you comment on Avalon and what's going on over there, why the increase isn't? It'd be helpful to also, next time, get a progression of years because theirs has gone up so much, it's not just one year, it's like every year. It must be over 50% in the last couple of years.
Yeah, we can look into that. And just to be clear, you're talking about the average for the total for the community, so you'd want us to include a median, not just the average, but not for the individual apartment complexes?
Correct. I don't need individual apartment complexes.
And we certainly can look back and provide historical rental rates from previous years because we have all that information. And just to clarify, when we did contact Avalon, it's not that they just renovated the unit, it's that the unit was vacated, they renovated it, and then rented out to a new individual. So, it was a turnover unit, but also brought up to both market rate and more modern standards.
Okay, well, other places too have vacancies and they don't do that kind of thing. Another question I have for you is, and I know this is difficult, are you weighting these averages? Like, like take Malibu Creek Apartments 2 has eight units, and Malibu Canyon Apartments has 698 units. So, when you're averaging those two numbers, are you weighting it so that we don't get a deceptive number like, because what we really want to know is what the average apartment is going for, not, I mean, one has 10 times or, no, 100 times almost, the amount of apartments.
That's correct. We do weight the data, and I'll double-check how we do the math, but we collect the spreadsheets from each of the complexes individually. And I have a master spreadsheet where I do that information and I weight the data by the average based on how many apartment units there are total.
Okay, so, when we get an average and a median next time, it'll be based on a couple thousand apartments?
Correct.
Okay. Finally, I would just point out as a comment that there will be a ballot measure in November allowing municipalities to exact rent control. And one thing, just for the public, that I'm gonna be looking very carefully at in deciding whether I want to do that, if we're given the authority, is rates like 16.8% because that, to me, is not acceptable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item number six.
Item six, I just want to make a couple comments. Thank you to the many members of the public who contacted me and other city council members about AT&amp;T desiring to abandon its obligations to provide landlines. I did want to tell the council that the League of California Cities today took a position, the LA County Division took a formal position unanimously that it would be opposing the elimination of landlines, and they are going to send a letter and possibly testify at an upcoming meeting in front of the Public Utilities Commission. So, whatever letter we send, in addition to sending it to us, staff should send to the League as well because they're collecting those letters. And I thank the mayor for putting this on so expeditiously because there is a deadline for the public to comment, and I think we should be publicizing that deadline too that's coming up in March. My final comment is that I would ask staff, because we have gotten so much commentary from the public on this, if we could send our letter to the Public Utilities Commission and send a copy of the letter to each HOA president so that they will have it along with instructions if they wish to testify. Or submit written testimony. Thank you.
I wanted to add that the COG, we also sent a letter in opposition at our last COG meeting, and Supervisor Horvath has also sent a letter in opposition. And why this is such a concern to our community is cell service is so unreliable, and AT&amp;T especially has not made the improvements necessary to guarantee service. So, in the event of an emergency, many people rely on their landline, so that's something that we do not want to take away. And some of the information coming out from AT&amp;T has, it's really been trying to confuse voters or residents about what they're trying to do, but the bottom line is that they are asking for permission to not have to guarantee an AT&amp;T landline, and especially in a high fire zone and what we've been through, it's something that we are not willing to let go of just yet. If we can have better cellular reception and service, I think it would be a very different conversation. And the City of Agoura is considering it tonight, and the other cities have, Hidden Hills adopted it, and I forget when Westlake is, but the COG voted unanimously.
And as long as it's open, I'd like to weigh in as well. I am also opposed to AT&amp;T's proposal here, but I do want to be clear that they are still planning to provide a landline service. The difference is, instead of running over a copper wire, they're proposing to run their landline service VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol. And the challenging part with that is when we lose power, you lose phone. Whereas, you know, our cell service, as has already been mentioned, has very poor coverage here in Calabasas, and it could, in the state of an emergency, leave many of our residents stranded without the ability to communicate.
Thanks to everybody for putting this forward and the mayor for getting it, along with city manager on the agenda. As I mentioned a number of meetings ago, we dealt with this at the COG, at SCAG on the Legislative Committee. And while there is gonna be the Voice Over Internet Protocol option they're putting forward, it still does not solve the emergency aspect that the mayor spoke to, and that is most concerning to those of us over mid-20s, 30, and that age who may rely on cell service or landline service. And if you don't have either, except, especially when power outage, that becomes a danger for certain residents. So, I'm very proud of our city for doing this so quickly.
I too support pushing against AT&amp;T. I'm saddened by it because this generation, it'll probably be only this generation that experienced something like we did with Woolsey. It was overwhelming, it was a regional emergency, and not to learn anything by it, and then this is really a slap in the face for many of us who live in a mountainous canyon community where we can't get cell coverage. So, I hope all these letters are effective and I join in support of my council members and the regional support from everybody, including our wonderful Lindsay Horvath for the 3rd District.
Thank you, everyone. So, there's no speaker cards. So, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on consent? Since there are no, nobody would like to speak, may I have a motion to approve consent items number three to six?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent items carry.
Mayor. Mayor, if I could add something, at the COG meeting that the mayor was at, we did have a representative from the California Public Utilities Commission present, and one of the questions that was asked was what carries more weight? Letters coming from cities, letters coming from the supervisor and so forth, or from individual residents? And the representative said both. Please send in letters. And so, councilman, I do appreciate your comments about sharing this with the HOAs, but we do also want to encourage residents and voters to also weigh in on this topic as well.
And it's really easy. There's a simple link and you click on it and you can just add your comments to their docket for their meeting. So, we can post that link.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, that information is also in tonight's agenda packet. Attachments B and C have details on how to participate in the remote public process through the CPUC.
Yeah, it was actually quite simple, so, that'd be great for people to weigh in. Now, we're gonna move on to old business. Item number seven is adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1888, establishing transportation impact thresholds. And Tom Miracle is here to make the presentation, along with our Public Works Director, Curtis Castle.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. Before you tonight is a resolution to adopt thresholds related to traffic, transportation analysis. And then, to provide some background for that, we have prepared a presentation that's gonna cover changes in state law that triggered these changes. We're gonna explain the new criteria, and we're also gonna go into some detail about how the city will review and screen projects as it relates to this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom Miracle, our City Traffic Engineering Consultant.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, in 2013, the state adopted, or the governor signed SB 743, which sort of set this all in motion for the state to change the way that it looks at transportation impacts for development projects. Before this was adopted, we looked at the impacts to drivers that are using the roadway system, and we looked at what's called level of service, what the operational characteristics are of the roadway system and the intersections. SB 743 essentially pushes that to look at what are the air quality impacts of the transportation system as the environmental measure that should be looked at. Implementation began in July of 2020. At the time, the city was going through a general plan update, so we held off on coming to council until after the general plan update was done so that we would have guidance from the general plan adoption that was done, and we're before you today to take action. adoption that was done, and we're before you today to take action. The proposed analysis is really looking at two ways. One is this new SEQA vehicle miles traveled impact criteria, while still looking at the impacts that we've looked at previously with levels of service as a local discretionary action process. So there's two processes here that we are proposing, and that is what our general plan lays out for the requirements for the city moving forward, is to look at the SEQA impacts as required by law, but to keep those local transportation assessment impacts that we've had for many, many years, to look at how that development may or may not impact our local roadway system. This new environmental impact analysis, there's many ways that we can look at it. The state created some guidelines that we're currently under, since we haven't adopted our own. LA County has adopted their own also. Many cities across the state have adopted these guidelines and thresholds. We originally did look at the state guidelines, but we've ultimately decided, through our discussions with Planning Commission and the Traffic and Transportation Commission, to follow the guidelines established by LA County and their methodology, which is really focused on the regional SCAG and AQMD air quality goals, looking at a reduction in the vehicle miles traveled by our residents as new development is built. And what we're looking at is establishing the criteria based upon the city's average vehicle miles traveled per capita as the baseline, as opposed to looking at the regional. We don't want to compare ourselves to downtown LA or to other parts of LA County in terms of how the VMT is being looked at. We really want to compare ourselves to ourselves. How are we doing at reducing our VMT impacts? And then, what that means is we're setting that threshold at 16.8 percent. And so, for instance, right now, the average vehicle miles traveled by a resident in our community is 20.1 vehicle miles traveled per capita per day, and work-based, we're looking at somewhere around 24 vehicle miles traveled per employee or worker. So what our threshold would be is that new development, we would be looking at, is it likely that the residents and/or employees in those areas would be generating VMT that is 16.8 percent less than that average? So for instance, 16.72 VMT per capita for home-based trips, and 19.64 for per employee for the work-based trips. And the way that those numbers are established is through regional transportation modeling that's done by SCAG, and those regional models are based upon several things in order to calibrate them. They're based upon the census data, where people provide information about how they travel and how far they travel. There's actually a fairly large group of people across the United States that do logs, where they log their travel every day. And then it's also supplemented with information that comes from when we use our phones. As we know, location data gets sold by all the different various providers and aggregated, and that's now been a major source of use for using these travel models, where we know in a greater detail where people are traveling and how far. The way that we're going to be looking at this is kind of a two-step process. One is looking at the project through this initial screening process about whether it's likely to have a less-than-significant impact, based upon the project size and type, whether it's in what's called a low VMT area, and then its proximity to transit, or what's called high-quality transit corridors. So for the project size, we're looking at small projects that generate less than 110 vehicle trips per day, which has historically been the threshold that we've used for requiring traffic analysis. And then the type of project, looking at locally-serving retail, such as restaurants, banks, medical offices, daycares, parks, community assembly areas, that essentially providing new businesses and services within the community, that hopefully will reduce the trips that people take outside of the community, where they can kind of stay within the community. So for instance, where we've added residences and we've added commercial space within the commons, that's potentially reducing the vehicle miles traveled, because there's more things we can do within the community. And then the low VMT areas, this is where the modeling has showed that there are areas within the community where people are already traveling below those thresholds. And if a project goes in that is of similar nature to what's already there, it's presumed that people that live in those areas will travel the same. And then transit priority areas, high-quality transit is defined as a transit service that operates every 15 minutes or less. We don't have that in Calabasas. We don't have any major transit centers or hubs, so the transit priority area won't really apply. And then if it doesn't meet any of those criteria, the project would be required to do a full VMT analysis, and that traffic analysis would have to go through city review. This map is an example for residential areas. The yellow area is where the VMT is below the city average, but not below the threshold that we're asking for council to establish. The kind of salmon-colored or pink color is where it's above the city average, and the blue is where it's already below this threshold of 16.8 percent, which kind of makes sense when you look at this. People that live near the areas where we have other businesses and office areas have an opportunity to travel less, to get to those shops. You go grocery shopping, if you live in the communities within the salmon-colored areas, you have to drive further to do things. And then the next thing that we would be looking at is if a project generates more than 110 trips per day, we would also have them do a local transportation operational assessment, and this is the traditional traffic study that would be looking at how that project is affecting our local roadway network, the intersection operations. We do a much more detailed look at the site access and queuing and safety. With that, our recommendation is that council adopt Resolution Number 2024-1888, establishing new transportation impact thresholds.
Thank you so much. Peter, do you want to start off? I see a lot of notes being taken, so I think you're a good place.
Well, I was just having a few thoughts running through my mind as you were sharing with us. So first of all, thank you for sharing your presentation. When we look at level of service, previously, we looked at the impact it would have, a development might have, based on level of service on a particular intersection or a particular street, and if a project was large enough that it created an impact, we could require that the developer improve the light by adding a lane, adding a left-turn lane, or taking other measures to bring that level of service back up again. Are there any triggers with the VMT that would allow us to do that as well? And if so, how would we know where to apply them?
Thank you, council member. That's a good question. So we'd still be looking at that level of service through that local transportation assessment, through our discretionary approval process. For the VMT analysis, if they are above the threshold, they have to develop measures that the city accepts that will reduce VMT being generated by the project. And the types of things that they can do are, they can add some commercial space or something that would reduce the number of trips by having something that people can use locally instead of traveling. They could provide access to transit by paying for bus passes for people that live there. They could provide better bike lockers and storage. They could actually help fund a city active transportation project where they put sidewalk in, or they put in bike lanes. Things that actually promote or physically provide something that the community can use to reduce the amount of vehicle miles we travel.
Okay, so the key word I heard was discretionary, which means that we don't have to enforce it. It's a decision on our part, yes?
There's two processes. The SEQA process with VMT is not discretionary.
Okay.
That's part of the SEQA process.
The LTA is discretionary.
Yeah, the level of service analysis, the traditional traffic study analysis, is discretionary. So what that means, though, is if the community development department determines that the size and nature of the project doesn't require SEQA analysis, we also cannot require the VMT analysis. But on the other hand, when we, when council or planning commissioner staff determines that a project is going to have a discretionary approval process, that's when we can require that traffic analysis to be done through that discretionary process. There are also approval processes that are non-discretionary and are ministerial in nature. Those, we may not be able to require a traffic analysis.
Okay, and so the key word that's going to come up now is objective. Is it objective? And I'm going to ask this one to our city attorney, and therefore, would we be able to enforce that with a residential multifamily project that has low-income housing?
The key is going to depend on exactly how much low-income housing it has, and whether, which zone it's in. If it comes in under the affordable housing overlay zone, for example, and meets those requirements, it may be the case that the project is exempt from SEQA, and thus, we would not analyze the VMT standards. We would still look at the level of service standards, because even if exempt from SEQA, it's still going to be subject to a site plan review permit at a minimum. That's a discretionary permit, although the discretion is cabinbed by state law, so we could still look at the level of service analysis.
Okay. And then one other line of questioning, not interrogation, just questioning. I mean, I appreciate what VMT tries to do. We want to encourage office next to residential and retail next to that, and mix it all up, so that people are more inclined to walk and drive less. So it really penalizes somebody putting office next to office or residential next to residential. But it doesn't do anything to really fix some of our troubled intersections. And one example I can give is, we have the traffic that takes the 101 to Lost Hills Road, to Lost Virginus, Malibu Canyon, down to PCH, and that's a significant number of cars coming through our streets. And I know we have other intersections and streets that are just as challenged. When the freeway backs up, our own Parkway Calabasas and Calabasas Road are very backed up. Without developers being able to be held accountable for increasing our streets, what's our plan for managing the growth in these intersections?
So, you know, the Public Works Department, we do look at the traffic patterns regularly. And so even outside of, regardless of what's happening with development, we're still looking at how our roads are functioning. That's based on, you know, staff's perception, also complaints we get from the community, right? We take those seriously and investigate those. So that's kind of a process that's always going on, that, you know, sort of informal analysis, and when we... Is it on?
You're on close.
Okay, sorry about that. So we're kind of always going that analysis informally, and when we see an issue, you know, we will, you know, conduct traffic studies and analysis through the department.
So if I could add to that, we have a traffic mitigation fee program that has specific projects that are identified in that program, that every development pays for based upon the size and/or type of development. And we are, so now that the general plan's been adopted, and we have a new circulation element, we are in the process of updating, and we'll be bringing back to you, hopefully later this year, an update of that traffic mitigation fee program. And the projects that are identified for that fee program are those that are in the general plan, which are roadway widenings, intersection improvements, putting in some bicycle facilities and that kind of stuff. So there is a mechanism for development to help pay for those improvements. But there is, on a project-by-project basis, we may not be able to exact as much as we used to, because the process is just a little more muddied, and because of the state laws related around housing, you know, our ability to do that, in some cases, is going to rely on the developer willing to do it, or for us being able to twist the arm hard enough.
Okay. I'll just leave with one last comment if I can, then, and that is, anecdotally, our most challenging traffic here in Calabasas is when the 101 freeway is backed up, when everybody jumps off the freeway and looks for a surface street to come over the hill. And I would just encourage our Public Works Department to look for Caltrans and federal grants and other opportunities to solve that problem. I know it's not our problem. Well, it is our problem, but it's not our cause. And somehow, we need to work with Caltrans and any funding that we can get to fix that. And that perhaps is an extra lane to get up the hill, but of course, that would change our Morro Road Bridge there. There's a lot of challenges to be overcome there, and I think that traffic is one of the things that our residents, they experience on our streets, and they don't understand that it's a problem that we can't solve here. And so I'd ask you to keep your eyes open for opportunities.
Thank you. James?
All right, thank you. I don't have any questions or comments.
David?
Thank you, and thank you for this report. I think it's clear, in looking at and listening to what you said and reading the report, that we all know public transit for our city is very low. We do have two park-and-rides that we've developed in the last number of years. What I heard or read or understand is, we need, how do we, I guess the question for you both is, how do we go about increasing ridership, creating bike lanes, which, again, a lot of this we get to hear, I get to hear, in the regional council at SCAG, when we are dealing with these VMT issues constantly, and I know Mayor Weintraub did when she was on the Transportation Commission. What else can we do to increase the use of public transit or create a pathway, so that we have more use of public transit, and maybe bike lanes in the city, if that's something you think about?
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. I think when it comes to public transit, it's discussions like this that help. It's really outreach and making people aware that we do have public transit. And that is a discussion that can happen more regularly, if that's something that council wants to hear, but that's really just a public information effort. And we can look at ways that we can do that a little bit better in the Public Works Department. And as far as bike lanes go, we do have, you know, a master plan for bike lanes, and we look at grants when they're available and ways we can do that, but we're also conscious of traffic patterns. And we just heard from Mayor Pro Temp about, you know, potential issues, or issues that happen when there's, on local streets, when the freeway is backed up. So we have to be cognizant of that when we look at the bike lanes. So we're trying to balance all of those. When we look for grants and look at future, you know, road projects, those are both, you know, transit and bike lanes are part of that discussion at every project. It doesn't mean that enhancements to either those make it into every project, but it is something that we consider.
So, sorry, along those lines with public transit, it is a difficult problem to solve in a community like this. Suburban communities typically have low ridership, because the transit service is not coming or going to where people that live in this type of community goes. Unless we're going to get some sort of, like, regional rapid transit type of bus service, we're not going to get MetroLink, of course, but, you know, the MetroLink services and those types of services, the limited-stop bus services, have actually done really well getting people to where they want to go, in some ways faster than if you try to get in your car and drive. And that's the kind of public transit, I think, we need to look at supporting, is those kind of limited-stop bus services that can get people outside of the community to where they need to go. And we also have an issue with getting kids to and from school, getting kids that want to get out of their home and from school to other parts of the community. Those are the ones we have more control over, and that's the education piece, is that we have a lot of transit service that's pretty good for a city of this size, and I think a lot of people just don't know about it.
Great, thanks. And yes, Mayor Pro Temp, Kraut's comments are very well taken and received. Looking at the map, and this will be my last comment, just looking at the pink area, and it may be not to scale, but it looks like that area is pretty clear. The majority of the city is a higher average for VMT than what we want, or you're proposing, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And by passing this resolution tonight, that'll help hopefully reduce some of that ridership, or VMT miles, VMT numbers, let me rephrase that.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, okay, all right. Thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the report. I really enjoyed reading it. I read it all, and it's comforting to know that, from a paperwork standpoint, you know, all the boxes are checked. I particularly like the CEQA screening criteria. I mean, there's a model that you're following that's efficient, but the point came up of, well, my concern is, who's going to pay for all of this? So a building comes in, and obviously, it's going to bring more traffic, it's going to have an impact on the entire community. The developer is going to wash his hands of it. I don't know if there's going to be a responsibility for the developer to consider contributing to that. Looking for grants is going to take a while, and we're never going to catch up to the impact that it's going to have, and we're going to become a big city with a lot of congestions without answers, and the answers will be too late. So I'm, I'm not quite sure. I like the where it goes and what it's for, but it's kind of like a wild storm. You know, you can never prepare for it enough. I'd like to see more on the management side than, or some suggestions, how we can get ahead of the curve a little bit, and what that might entail. And looking at it, you've developed some very, very good models and modeled that out into the future. So maybe we can prepare for the future ahead of time and look for grants in areas that where we're expecting a high, higher level of traffic to be.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great comment. And, and so like Tom mentioned, there is, we do have the mitigation fee that's paid with, you know, quite a bit of development, so that, that creates funds that are available for the city to make these improvements where, when we've, when they're needed. So that is kind of a, provides somewhat of a backstop for future growth and traffic problems.
Is that proportionate to the size of the, the property that's being built and the amount of traffic? I mean, what's the balance there?
Yes, and, and actually, the new fee, so the existing fee for residential, you pay on a per unit. The new fee, state law now requires us to go by square footage, and there's, there's actually really good documentation and research around larger homes generate more traffic than smaller homes. So the larger homes, if a single-family home comes in and it's large, they're going to pay more traffic mitigation fee than a home that is small. And, and, you know, so we're, we're looking at that, we're making sure that the fee is reasonable. Also, we don't want to have an unreasonable fee, but, but it is, you know, it can only cover the developments, the new developments proportional share of those improvements. The city still has to come up to pay for the share of improvements that's by existing traffic. So that's kind of an unfunded piece.
It's a real challenge.
Yes.
You know, the local area, Topanga Canyon, right now, is being widened all the way from Chatsworth to the beach, and they're starting in Woodland Hills. It's going to take a long time, but as I drive through there now, I just see the dollars that it takes and the team and the amount of people. I don't know if the developers' fees would ever absorb probably just a small portion of it, but it concerns me very, very much how we're going to look toward the future and protect against the problems that we'll be facing. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could emphasize one point?
Yeah.
The traffic impact fees is really the most powerful tool we have, and so staff's already mentioned, we're in the process of looking at an update to those fees, to both account for the new state law that shifts it to square footage for residential, and also to bulletproof them against if the California Business Roundtable measure passes in November, which we hope it doesn't, but if it does, to be protected against that, and some other updates to the Mitigation Fee Act overall. So we're in process with that update. I don't know if we have a, we're in process with that. I don't think we have a timeline yet, but we're in process. So that would then help to improve, both increase the fees as they can be increased to reflect the higher cost of traffic improvements, but also help insulate the fees against potential future challenge.
Thank you. I have one question. If you can pull up the map, in, like, for people watching at home, if a project comes before the city, the exact same project, proposed in the three different colored areas, can you explain what the difference would be, like, in real, in a real-life example? If the same exact project, same square footage, same everything, goes in the light pink, the blue, and the yellow, how, in real life, in real-world terms, what happens?
Mayor, sure. So a project comes in, if it is, if it's a residential project and it comes in and it's in the blue area, it is presumed to have a less-than-significant CEQA impact, so environmental impact
Right.
to transportation and, you know, air qual, air quality is now what transportation is about for CEQA. If it comes in in the yellow area, and it's sort of-
So then what is it? So then what happens? If it comes in less than?
So if it comes in less than, then, then it's presumed to not have an impact.
Right.
And therefore, we would rely on, if it's a, if it's a large enough project, that it falls under our other criteria through the discretionary process, we would then rely on the results of the traffic impact study to determine what, what and where, and how much of an impact that, that it would have. And that's, that's the process we've had for 30 years.
Right.
If it falls into the other two areas, the developer would be required to perform an analysis of what their VMT impact is. The yellow area is between the current city average and the threshold, meaning that it, it's likely to have an impact, but a smaller impact than if it was in the pink areas, meaning it would be a little easier for them to find a way to mitigate that impact than if it's in the pink areas. A large project that comes into there may have a potentially impossible task of trying to mitigate their, their vehicle mile traveled impact, because it's so far away from the threshold. But in both cases, if it falls outside of the blue area, they have to do a full VMT analysis traffic study, as well as the traditional traffic study.
And in the current, the way it stands today, if a project came forward, what would happen in the blue area today?
So today, projects that come forward in the blue area for transportation impacts, environmental impacts under CEQA, they would be presumed to not have an impact, or a significant impact, and therefore, they would not have to, to mitigate their environmental impacts related to transportation. They may or may not still have to do a traffic study to mitigate their local roadway network impacts under the discretionary process.
So the change from, in the proposal, would be what, in the blue area?
Well, there, in, in terms of the exist, so in terms of the process prior to the passing of this law, nothing would change.
Okay.
It's just that we now, it shifted from being a CEQA impact for level service to being a discretionary impact. And it's, it's adding sort of this additional layer on it of the CEQA impact is, is only based on VMT, not level of service.
And that's what Peter asked about, the discretionary aspect.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any further questions? No speaker cards on this item?
None, Madam Mayor.
May I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1888, establishing transportation impact thresholds related to transportation analysis?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item passes. Thank you, Tom and Curtis. We're going to move on to our earthquake insurance coverage presentation by the California JPIA. Tony Consuelo and Jim Thaden from CJ, CJPIA are going to make the presentation on Zoom.
Mayor Weintraub, I'll do just a short intro, if I, if I may. Last spring, during budget discussions, the city council expressed interest in looking at earthquake insurance. And in late September, at the council meeting, we had a presentation by Allied Insurance and regarding, and then there was a number of questions that were asked by city council at that time. So this presentation by Jim Thaden is in response to those questions that were given by council in late September. We are looking for direction from city council this evening on earthquake insurance, just to reiterate, the city has never purchased earthquake insurance in, in its, in its history. So we're just, we're just looking for direction from council on regarding that, and we'll, if council desires, we'll put that into our priorities for next year's budget discussions, as we are starting the budget process already for July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025. So with that, I will pass it along to Jim Thaden from CJPIA. And Jim, are you with us?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
I will go ahead and, I will drive the presentation, so go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Thank you for letting me speak. I am the Insurance Programs Manager with the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, a risk pool of 126 members, approximately 100 of them are cities, and I work with our CEO to place property coverage for all of the members who participate in that program, which is a voluntary program, approximately 100 and a bit more, exactly 116 members. I've been in the industry for about 30 years and been with the authority for almost 17 years. With that, I'd like to explain the three options that are available currently for the city. One is the California JPIA program itself. I'll go through that in a second. The second is a standalone program, and the third is a parametric program, which is a bit different than, than traditional insurance. The California JPIA program has the pricing that you can see, and has a shared limit of $200 million for all members who experience an earthquake in a given incident, or a $200 million limit over the entire course of the year for all earthquake incidents. With that, also comes flood coverage. They are tied together, and there's an additional $200 million limit for any flood claims when purchased through this program. We outlined just the tennis and swim center, as you can see, and then also the entire values of the city's entire property schedule, meaning all property that the city lists with us. The second is a standalone policy. That is a quote, "provided for just the city's coverage with no sharing of limits." For just the tennis and swim center, you can see what the, the limit is for a 5% deductible, I mean, what the premium is for a 5% deductible, for just the tennis and swim center, and then also for all $68 million in values, and with a higher deductible, what the premium is for just this tennis and swim center, along with all values. Again, the, the benefit of this is that it's a $7 million limit that is exclusive to the city, is a bit higher premium, and then also, for the 68 million in values, it's a higher premium as well. But again, it's a dedicated limit, meaning if there's an earthquake, only the city has access to that amount. A parametric is a financial instrument that's different than insurance. It pays out based on the USGS intensity scale, so as a certain percentage of intensity is reached, a certain percentage of the dollar amount of $8 million is paid out. And this is the cost of that. It's not called a premium, but it's the cost of that. The intensity scale starts at 40%. It is a complicated intensity scale that would take some time to, to dig into, but suffice to say that the greater the intensity of the earthquake, the more money that get paid, gets paid out, up to 100% of the $8 million. I kept it brief intentionally, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Ed, do you want to start?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Oh, boy, where to begin? You know, this is like playing Russian roulette a little bit, or gambling, no different than it is in some ways, make as simple as a healthcare plan. Do I get the high deductible and have some savings in the bank and pay for it when it happens, or the low deductible and use my money elsewhere? So I'd just like to get your opinion of what you've seen on other cities in our area. I looked at the property insurance program in the other cities that you have members, and I highlighted some that were in earthquake. Well, they all are, but for the most part, high-risk areas like Big Bear, Bradbury, Indio, Santa Fe Springs. I'm tempted to, I mean, I think, I know we need it, I'm an advocate of it, and I look forward to the day we, we do this and budget for it. It's just a question of how deep. It seems like the standalone policy for us might be something to really consider, because all the buildings aren't necessarily, that, that leads me to this question. Let me skip right to the question. On one of the slides, you were valuing the properties, and I wasn't sure if you're adding the cost of the land, or that's just the building itself?
Just the building itself, at, at a replacement cost value.
Okay. And do we have a cost of each of the buildings in this presentation?
Yeah. Not in this presentation, but the city does have, it's called a property schedule. The city does have access online to that of each building and non-building locations as well, as to the value that is applied.
Well, I think we're going to have to make a decision when the time comes for us to do this and elect to do it and dip our toe in the water a little bit. It might be cold, but nonetheless, and select some buildings on a selective basis and declare the, whichever is better, the premium, or the, the standalone, or bulk some of those buildings, bundle them together. How do you see it as a city, knowing our city, what you would recommend?
I apologize. Is that directed to me?
Yeah, it is. And I appreciate your background, and you've been doing this for a long time. You're surrounded and concentrated in other cities, so what do you see is the most popular choice to start out with?
Within the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, there are very few members who do not purchase some kind of, I say very few, but less than half of the members do not purchase earthquake insurance. There isn't really a standalone option for most members. That's not a request that's often made. It sometimes does make sense, and there are a few members who have done that. In terms of what to cover, the typical analysis is, what are the most important locations that the city may not want to sell a bond, or dip into general funds, or other access to do that, get a loan, other things like that?
You know, it's, it's tough to hide a library, city hall, and the tennis and swim center when there's an earthquake. The earthquakes are not selective. So, thank you. You gave me, and I'm sure our council, a lot to think about, and there'll be a lot more questions as we talk about it in the future on our budgeting side. Thank you very much.
James?
I did have a couple of questions. I don't know if you know the answer to this, but typically, when there's a large-scale earthquake, that's like regional and affects and inflicts a lot of damage, to what extent does, does a government, the federal government declaring a disaster and making funds available? I mean, if we're spending all this money on insurance, and if we have a really big earthquake, if, if the government's just going to come in and give us money to fix it, does that weigh into the equation as to whether it's worth it? I mean, under what conditions do, can we expect the government to do that? Like, I mean, the federal government mostly?
Thanks for the question. And it's a very difficult question to answer, because the last time that happened in California was 1994, and in the United States, there are very few earthquakes that happen that are big enough where that has become an issue. We have had earthquakes that have been covered in our program, but there have been so few earthquakes that FEMA and CALIMA have, have not really been involved. It's other disasters in which they step in, wildfire, some flooding, events such as that. So I, I hate to not be able to give you an answer, but with earthquakes, it's been so long since there's been one, 30 years.
Well, let me, let me ask it a different way, because you bring up a good point, and I, that's what I was thinking of, is a 1994 earthquake, when we really didn't have anything to insure at that point, very little. Let's just say we had a 1994, well, let's go back to 1994. If the city had had earthquake insurance back then, and then FEMA came in and gave all the money to redo it, what, what happens with that? Because then we can't double-dip and take the insurance money and the FEMA money, right?
That's correct.
So for those cities, was it worth it for them to get insurance for a big earthquake? Or was, did they just pay extra into the system all those years and then just get paid by the federal government?
I have to say that was before my time. While I had been in this industry that long, that wasn't part of the area, and I have not seen studies showing what FEMA did. But I can look into that and be prepared. If that information is available, I can be prepared for a later discussion.
Well, I think that that information is invaluable because the one thing that I want to protect against the most is not a small earthquake that is probably going to be not worth it for us because it's, you know, an issue with the deductible, and then it's not even that much money. I'm concerned with a devastating earthquake where buildings come down or need to be gutted or whatever. And if we're always going to get reimbursed for that, maybe it isn't worth it. I don't know. As a government agency, I just need more information on that.
I think Ron wanted to weigh in on that.
Oh, did you want to weigh in? Okay, Ron.
Yeah, so I worked for the city of Glendale in 1994. I can tell you that we did not finalize our claims with FEMA for over a decade. And with that, it comes the money. So the money was not fast. Now, we're four, five administrators later, five administrations later, right? Because we were Clinton, and now we're under Biden. So FEMA has made massive changes. FEMA also with the wildfire, they were always asking us for what is our insurance, how much did our insurance claims pay, and so forth. So I don't know if that's been a shift in philosophy by FEMA as well, where we have an earthquake, and are they going to bang us over the head with why didn't you buy earthquake insurance?
Well, I don't care if they get upset with us for not buying the earthquake insurance as long as we get the money.
Right. And that leads into that question is how much?
I'd like some more information on that because I'm not willing to pay for earthquake insurance if it's not going to ever be worth anything. The other point I wanted to make on this situation was, just if you want feedback, I would not, I would only be in favor of insuring certain things. Like, you know, I wouldn't want to insure any of our parks. Like Danza Park does not need insurance, even though it's got a building that's an ancillary use of the facility. It's small, and if we had to rebuild it, we could. I would want to have insurance theoretically on things we own, like the city hall, the library, the senior center, the community center, probably the tennis and swim center, probably not the Creekside Park. But those are things that I would, I would look at, too. I wouldn't want to blanket insurance policy for every facility. I think we have to look at what the overall cost would be to rebuild a devastated park. And if it's just a question of, you know, cracks in the asphalt and the parking lot and some playground equipment that's disrupted, then I would, I would just not insure it. It's not worth it.
There's one more component. FEMA never pays for 100%. And depending on allowable claims cost, the most we could expect reimbursement from would be in the 91% percentile range.
Well, right. But I mean, if you tell me that, and we are going to get a 90% return rate, then I probably wouldn't be in favor of getting insurance because we're going to be paying for maybe 30 years worth of premiums, and then only 10% of whatever the damage is. So just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the coming back with the report. The points made regarding funds from FEMA in a major disaster are very important. Looking at the policies, the three choices given to us, bless you, the joint policy of 200 million for the entire JPIA, if I heard correctly, entity for either earthquake or flood, to me is not a good option. If there's a major enough earthquake in our region, even in LA County, let alone the other cities or entities that are part of JPIA, that 200 million would be eaten up in claims very quickly. I don't even think we'd, hopefully we'd never have to make a claim, but we'd never see it. We see how much it costs, even with the Woolsey Fire, or what the projections were when we had representatives come here talk about earthquakes and how much damage would be in buildings and all the way through LA County alone, that that, to me, makes little or no sense. The idea, the parametric $8 million coverage with costing 192,000 for up to 100% coverage, depending on the intensity of an earthquake, referring only to earthquake, if it's difficult for you guys to explain, I know you know it, and I understand a little bit, imagine what position we're here on council looking at something like that. So again, that alone would be a reason for me not to have going forward on that particular one unless it was highly recommended by three of my colleagues. So that leaves the third option, which is the standalone insurance, which if we were going to do anything, would make some sense, whether it's 5% or 20% deductible, and it's a $7 million exclusive limit as I saw it, or up to 68 million if we, if we did all of our properties as indicated. I think I agree with Councilmember Buzagin, who said obviously that there'd be, if anything, some selective properties that we do need to look at. And then it's a question of the cost and if it makes sense. Question, I guess I'm having for you rather than speaking only, does that, you talked about the replacement cost, the buildings, et cetera, does that include as residential earthquake policies, a consideration for increased cost of supplies and products, such as we had lumber go up how many hundreds of percent during the pandemic, and building costs as costs increase on those?
Yes, it does.
Okay. That's, that's a good thing. And then, again, it's, it's got to make some sense for us, and the only one that would potentially make sense to look at for me would be a standalone policy. But again, we have to look at how much it's going to cost us, what we can afford, and what the benefit actually is considering FEMA and other potential avenues. So that's, those are my comments.
Peter?
You know, all great comments so far. I'm looking at this a little differently, kind of a combination of what I heard from Councilmember Buzagin and Councilmember Shapiro. I'm looking at a big earthquake. Most likely, we're going to get FEMA assistance, and as we heard, maybe 90% of the money, and it's going to take a while to get there. So in the event of a big earthquake, I don't think we need to insure 100%, but we need to get 10%. We need to get it as quick as we can, and that would be one of the things we could do with an insurance policy like this. When it comes to a small earthquake, like Councilmember Shapiro pointed out, when you have 120 cities splitting 200 million, that's 1.6 million apiece, and that's really not going to cover a lot of cracks if we have them, you know, small damage throughout all of our buildings. So I just don't think because of that, that the JPIA policy is feasible for us. It also has a 5% deductible. So if we're looking at 68 million in properties and, you know, big damage across the board, we've got to cover that first 5%. And that's where FEMA might help, but they're going to be late to the table. So the JPIA program doesn't work for me. The standalone policy, it's just too expensive. If you think about the frequency of earthquakes and the amount that it's going to cover for $584,000 per year, I can't even understand how we could possibly get that number into the budget without cutting a lot of other services here in Calabasas. So I just, I can't see the standalone policy as being what we need, especially recognizing that FEMA will likely step in for a large earthquake. So I'm actually centered on this parametric policy, and I do have a question on that. I know you can't explain the whole table, but to get the whole 8 million, if we're sitting in the Empress Center, what's the number got to be?
Well, it's an intensity scale, which is different than the Richter scale. And that's a scale that unfortunately, it's not something that I have enough knowledge to explain, but I can be prepared with another expert to explain that if that's the city's interest.
Okay. You couldn't even give us a ballpark? Is it in the ballpark of a Richter V or a Richter VII?
It would, it takes into account the depth of the earthquake, not just the Richter scale. And so a depth earthquake of a shorter distance is different in intensity than of a deeper distance. An earthquake of maybe a 5.5 would begin the payout at 40%, and then going up to about a 7.2, perhaps, would be the high end, would be 100% payout.
Okay.
But it is a difficult correlation, and I would need to, in order to give a more full and complete explanation, I would need to bring in somebody who is an expert in that field.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it would be a good small payout where we might need it, but I'm not sure if the 192,000 a year is worth that much. It just isn't adding up in my head. So at this point, I'm leaning away from this, and I just want to share with my colleagues that the second item on the agenda after this, we're asking you for your budget recommendations, not only what do we want to add to the budget, but what do we want to take away from the budget or to balance that budget, or where do we want to get additional funds? So as we make a decision here, I'm just going to suggest that we, we might want to make a recommendation here and further review that when we get to the second, to the last item on the agenda. But just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been asked. I think it's interesting, after the Glendale story you shared, they still didn't buy insurance. They're not listed on here.
Glendale is not a participant in CJPIA.
Oh, well, then that would answer that. Okay. So, and I think you answered this. Out of all the cities that do participate, you said half have insurance?
So there are 126 members, about 100 are cities, 116 by earthquake coverage, 60, I'm sorry, by all risk coverage, meaning fire and vandalism coverages like that, 67 by earthquake coverage for at least one location.
So 67 out of 100 cities?
Yeah. 67 members. I don't have the city count in front of me, because there, there are approximately 25 non-city members.
Okay. Okay.
Like SCAG, for example, is a member.
Got it. And I saw, right, like Mountain Area Regional Transit Authority, there were some others listed. Kenan, have you had any conversations with any of the other city managers in the COG area? I see Westlake, Hidden Hills, Malibu?
I have not.
I'd like to get more information on the question that was raised. If you don't have insurance and there's a catastrophic earthquake, what happens with the FEMA reimbursement? I mean, there has to be a reason that all of these 67 members have purchased insurance and are not relying on FEMA. So I would be really interested in what the reimbursement is. I understand like the timeframe would be longer, but I can't imagine it's like dollar for dollar. There has to be some difference on why people are getting insurance. So I'd like to just get a little more information on this item. I don't want to, I'm a big believer in insurance and protecting our assets, so I don't want to brush it off. I just would like to get more information. I think the questions that were asked about the parametric policy, FEMA and others are good questions to get a little more information. And I would be interested if when you have, when you speak to some of these other city managers, just what made them, just to get some more information.
Will do.
Thank you. Let's see. We're supposed to provide direction to staff regarding purchasing earthquake insurance. Does anyone want to make comments for direction?
Well, I think we had a number of questions, perhaps they need to be answered. I'd like to consider it, but I want, I would like, and especially the last question you asked, which is, I guess, what I was roundabout saying, why are the cities still purchasing insurance? What are the problems with FEMA?
Yeah. So can we just get more information?
We can do that. So we'll, we'll gather information with the different cities and then also with the CJPIA, and then bring this back for further discussion.
Great. It was a good conversation.
And the, the parameters on the parametric policy?
Parametric, yeah.
Yes.
I couldn't think of another word.
And thank you for joining us via Zoom for the presentation. So we've given direction to staff, and this will come back. Let's take a break till nine and then come back for our last item, or second to last item. Okay, we are back, and we're going to move on to new business, our continued item with the mid-year budget update and adoption of resolution of appropriation number 2024-1889. Ron Allers is here to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our mid-year budget report. I will quickly go over our general fund. So you have here our four-year history of the general fund. People remember 1920, that was the pandemic and the lockdown that happened in March of 20. So that is the reason for the deficit that we experienced that fiscal year. That was mainly due to a number of different revenues drastically decreasing, one that we know of the transit occupancy tax with the lockdowns and the dearth of tourists and business people in our different hotels. The last three fiscal years, we've had surpluses, which has typically been our modus operandi. And then the three columns that are to the right show this year's budget. Budget started off originally with $179,000 in planned surplus. Current year actuals, which is six months, show a 2.8, 2.9 million deficit. That is actually typical for the first six months. So in the first six months, we receive very little in sales tax. We received $0 from VLF, which VLF is, God, where is it? VLF is a little over $3 million. We received nothing the first six months. We received very little as far as interest revenues and a host of other revenues. So that's why the revenue side is low. Conversely, on the expenditure side, we make a few expenses we pay for the entire year. So we pay all our insurance, CJPIA, we pay the full 12 months in July. So that's a full year expense. We pay all of our CalPERS unfunded liability, the full year expense all in July. We pay all of our annual memberships for Legal California Cities and so forth, all in July. It's not spread out evenly over 12 months. So that's why we are typically in this large of a deficit for the, for the first six months. So that is, I'll call it normal. For the revised estimate for the, for this total budget year, we're looking at about a $218,000 surplus, so a very slight increase from our original budget, although there are differences that I will highlight. So one is our sales tax. Sales tax has actually decreased for the last three quarters, and you can see that here on, on the chart. This is broken out by each quarter of the fiscal year. So we received our second quarter number last week, and it was a double-digit percent decrease, as you, as you can see there between the black bar and the brown, the brown bar. The prior quarter also was a decrease between the black and the brown. So we have adjusted our sales tax downward by $700,000 from the budget. So it currently stands at, stands at 7.5 million. To give you perspective, we received eight and a half million actually last year. So the revised estimate is down from actual about $1 million, and this is sales tax. Welcome to volatility of sales tax. We experienced the rapid rise. We didn't follow that. We experienced it, but we didn't follow it with the budget. We were always under on, on the budget because I can't forecast a 12% increase in sales tax. One, you guys are probably running me off the dais. Two, it's just too optimistic, even though it happens. Conversely, we're looking at $1 million down at this point. Realize that since the pandemic, sales tax has come in abnormally, I'll call it. So before the pandemic, for the first half of the year, the first six months, the city typically would receive 52% to 54% of its sales tax. Since the pandemic, that has not been the case. Since the pandemic, that has not been the case. Sometimes it's been forty-eight percent for the first six months, sometimes it was above fifty-six percent. I don't know what it's going to do this year. So the seven-and-a-half million dollars is my best guess as of today for what we've already experienced for the first two quarters, and my guess for the next two quarters, seven-and-a-half million. Any questions on sales tax before I kind of go on? That's our most difficult sale, revenue estimate to, to make, because it's based on the economy.
I think Ed has a question.
Ron, thank you. What area did we fall down on? Where in the sales? Was it auto, restaurants? Do you have an idea where that is right now?
I have an idea where that is, because I have the data. Unfortunately, I really can't disclose that, because we're not allowed to reveal certain information when we have such a low number of vendors that sell certain products. So if you look at the newsletter that we sent out last week on the sales tax, it's not every category of sales tax in there. So for example, general consumer goods, I can tell you up or down on, because there are literally hundreds of vendors, and so that you can't, you know, decipher and figure out who was down and who, and who was up. But otherwise, I can't, I can't disclose to you what the, what the major decrease was.
Thank you.
So, other increases, we increased our revenue estimate for property taxes by thirty-thousand. We increased our estimate of TOT by a hundred and fifty thousand, increased our interest revenue estimate by four-hundred thousand, and all those were delineated in the report. So the major decrease was to the sales tax, and there are other revenue estimate increases, be it the UUT, or property tax, or interest revenue, that went up, that basically made up for that large decrease in, in sales tax. Our estimated expenses have also gone up, because while we do our best job each year to estimate the future, there are increases to landscaping contracts that come in higher, increases to utilities, which we all experience, paying for our own home bills that come in higher, and the, and the city is not immune to that. Again, our final estimate revised for this year is two-hundred thousand to the good. For our resolution that the council is being requested to adopt tonight, we're doing those increases in the general fund revenues. We're also asking for a little over a hundred thousand dollars in LMD twenty-two expense increases. These are in line with the contract price increases for the landscaping contracts, which council has approved over the last number of months, as they've been brought to council for the different area zones of LMD twenty-two. All the expenses have been communicated to those associated HOAs within the LMD, and again, it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars, total increase to LMD twenty-two. In the transit fund, we are making changes for how we are actually funding our transit program. The prior year, we funded it from Prop A, Prop C, and Measure R, and we are readjusting that, one, based on the completed audit that we had from the MTA, which the council saw and reviewed either last meeting or the meeting before. The auditors proposed that we change our mix, and working with the public work staff, we had changed our mix to be eighty percent Prop A and twenty percent Prop C. Proposition A is the most restrictive out of AC, R, and M, our lovely four sales tax county increases. So with it being more restrictive, we're using that the most for our transit programs, and twenty percent coming from Prop C. The last change in the resolution is a ninety-thousand-dollar increase for our annual street rubberized overlay. That project is done, that's usually done in the summer, and we need to increase the budget by ninety thousand. Council approved the project, and they approved the dollar amount with the contractor and all that came in under the contract amount. It was just the, the budget estimate at this point for the accounting system just needs to increase by ninety thousand, and, and then that's all squared away. So that's the, the budget amendment, and I go over the allocation, the revenues, like I talked about with the general fund, and then those three funds, capital improvement from the LMD and the transit funds, the appropriations, about two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars for the budget amendment. And that is it for my presentation. On the mid-year, you have, within the report, you have the presentation, you have the resolution, and then you have forty pages of just the general fund, each account, each revenue account, and each expenditure account, and then what, what I revised on the, on the estimate for you. So I am available to answer any and all questions the council may have on the mid-year budget.
Great, thank you so much, Ron. I'm going to let the subcommittee go first. Peter, David.
So I, I just wanted to share that the budget subcommittee has met and gone through this. What we like to do is start each year by looking at how much money is coming in, because only after we know how much is coming in can we determine how much can go out. One of the things I want, want to remind everybody is we have some stable tax bases, like our property tax. Just because your neighbor's house sells for a hundred thousand less this year than it did last year doesn't mean that our property taxes are going down, because most people's assessment of their property value is, is set and, and is not readjusted until the property is sold. So because of that, we have that four-and-a-half million that we're pretty confident in. We've heard already that the sales tax has dropped this year, something interesting, because for the last three years, we've enjoyed a one- or two-million-dollar increase each year, so we've had a little extra money. So we do recognize we're heading into this year without that extra money, and fortunately, as Ron mentioned, a number of our other smaller taxes have, have rallied in certain areas to make up for the difference. So we're still looking pretty well on track for this year's budget, but I think this year's budget of, you know, twenty-seven-point-seven million is probably about what we're going to be planning for next year's budget as well, perhaps maybe even less than that. Certainly, I don't think we'll be higher than that. So this is more informational, I think, so that we can assess what happened the first half of the year, predict what's going to happen in the second half of the year, but overall, the city is still healthy and strong, and we're within budget.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. I agree with Mayor Protam on a lot of things, and while I am an optimistic person, I am concerned, and I will say, for a number of years, I have been asking for caution when it comes to sales tax, when it comes to our city. A number of years ago, going back to, let's say, COVID, the state and federal government, we're printing checks, we're printing money, and people were spending, which is what was intended, and it was allowing them to be able to function and so forth, but others just were able to spend. So during that time, our sales tax increased. For the last three quarters, if I added right, and I, I know we've talked about this, we're down approximately, on average, nine-point-two percent in sales tax revenue over the three, three quarters, about six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand from what was the estimated budget or the budget on that. Everything contributes to that. I, I mean, I am, I am concerned that real estate market, interest rates are higher, commercial entities are having some difficulty, and we, as a city council in the city, during this time, rightfully so and necessarily, have increased sheriff's budget, increased staff as well, increased staff's budget as well, and those are important things. I know we joked about it, I've been joked, as, I'm the conservative one, and we can joke about that later. I am, to an extent, but I am an optimist as a person, but I think we need to, especially going forward, looking at this year's budget, need to look for ways, either and/or, to reduce costs or increase our revenue streams going forward. Be creative, come up with some new solutions, because I am, again, three quarters in a row, I don't remember the last time we've ever seen this type of lack of sales tax or decrease in sales tax in our city. Now I realize there's lots of factors, and we are fine with this year's budget. I'm looking at the slide right in front of me, so I know that we are good for this year, and we met, and we appreciate all the hard work, but I am asking for us to be very careful and cautious going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you, Ron. Kind of like driving a car real fast, you know, you have to watch really careful, much We're a healthy city, I've seen this happen before. A city like ours, we're running a business, it's really not much different in some ways, and if it was the stock market, I would say buy, 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 because you want to buy low and sell high. The idea that we're going to be careful, like most businesses would be, our future planning, and what we spend is the prudent way to go. I don't think there's a need to panic here, and if we do, we'll adjust accordingly, but having this forecast, knowing where we stand, and a budget committee that's been watching how we spend our money, I think we're in good shape, and we have our eye on the ball. So thank you very much, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. A lot of the influences that happen here with, I think, sales and otherwise, the Band-Aid is really, I think, interest rates in a lot of ways, that maybe that might be a correlation. And hopefully, when they do drop down, which could be on the outside, maybe four or five months, maybe we'll see some residual effect, but it can't always go up, and we're prepared. So I'm glad to see that we're ensuring ourselves with our adjustments in our budget. Thank you.
I don't have any further comments, just thank you to staff and the budget subcommittee. I just noticed, I think, the resolution, it should say resolution number twenty twenty-four for item nine, attachment one, so we can just make that change. Let's see.
Thank you, Mayor.
Or may I have a motion to adopt resolution of appropriation number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen eighty-nine?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous approval? Great, thank you. Now we're going to move on to item number ten, which is city council direction on funding priorities for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, and Ron Allers will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Windingchop. So as I mentioned, we are going into fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget year, and akin to what we started last year, we would like city council input regarding funding priorities from, from the city council for next year. What items does the city want to add to the budget? What do you, how do you propose to, to pay for those items? And as David and Councilmember Shapiro and Councilmember Crowded has mentioned, does that, in order to pay for that, is that through increased revenues, is it through reduction in cost? And also, another item that the council budget committee has bancheted around, too, is, you know, adopting the budget with some, I'll call it somewhat of a sizable surplus, instead of it always being balanced down to zero or ten bucks or whatever. You know, this year, the council adopted a budget at a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar surplus, and so far, so good, we're looking at being two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, right? So with that, I will leave it up to the council for spending priorities.
Turn to Kinden.
And Mayor, if I could also add, this, this staff reporter, this item on the agenda is really meant to just initiate discussion, and no way does it replace the meetings that we'll have, where we invite the community to come in and participate, nor the outreach that you do as council members and so forth. There's the, that's, is part of the whole process, and we do have special meetings for council scheduled for that. Really what this is, is the budget committee wanted to be able to solicit your input, and the only way for us to do that collectively is with an item on the agenda. So with that, Mayor Protam and Councilman Shapiro may be able to add some additional.
I'll go back to the budget subcommittee.
I, I think the big thing we wanted to do was, it's already been said, get an idea of what you want, and where, when it comes to funding priorities, that means something, I think, substantial, not a little item, but little items are fine. When it comes to, if we're talking about reducing funding or decrease, decrease in costs, I think we're looking, hopefully, at something substantial, not minor, again. That was the only thing I would add.
And I would just echo that, and want to refresh everybody's memories. Over the last year, we've talked a lot of great ideas. We've talked about our sheriff's contract and how we all want to increase that. We've talked about security contracts. We have talked about insurance. We have talked about additional programs here in the city for events and stuff. You know, we've had all sorts of great ideas, and I would love to implement every one of them, but we're going to have to make some choices this year, because money is not flowing as freely as it has the last three years. So we just wanted to get your input. What are the things that you absolutely want to have happen this year, and where do you think we can, you know, find that money? Is there any other ideas for revenue sources? Obviously, we're a city, we, we're restricted in where we can get our revenues. We can't open a, a lemonade stand on the corner and try to balance the budget that way, but we're looking for your ideas and your feedback, so that as Councilmember Shapiro and I move forward, we're hoping that the budget we bring back to you reflects most of what you're looking for by the time we get back.
Can I ask that you guys, the two of you, start, since you're budget subcommittee?
Well, I, I mean, we didn't go into it, because we really wanted to hear from you first, but I, I think I can speak for Peter, and hopefully, Mayor Protam and I. Security was one of the high priorities, and additional events, those are two of the ones that I think we're in sync on.
James?
To me, if I had to choose one area, it would be public safety. I think that we are running a risk of, you know, kind of a general panic in the city over some of the things that have gone on. Residential burglaries, traffic-related concerns, which continue, people not obeying traffic rules at all, because they know there are less officers out there for enforcement, and that they're doing other things. And theft that is really hurting our businesses, and the threat of theft, with people not wanting to go. I mean, you know, when you hear that there's, someone is robbed at gunpoint, walking through the commons, it just, I think that's just a tremendous deterrent to people going there and, and whatnot. Anyhow, public safety, also, emergency preparedness, I throw in there. I, I don't just mean public safety like law enforcement, putting, I do want extra officers, but I, I think we need to be better prepared for any one of a number of natural disasters. Wildfires have been more recent, but I, I remember the ninety-four earthquake here, and it was just devastating to the city. It just shut down everything, and I don't think the public was adequately prepared for that. And that's what happens when you have decades go by and there's no, there's no issue. So before anything else, those are the things I would put at the forefront.
Ed?
Thank you. I would agree entirely. I mean, we can't turn our back on public safety, that's number one. Our sheriff has worked so hard, it's, it builds a certain momentum, and it's hard to restore that if, if we don't stay on top of it. Fire speaks for itself. It's so hard to cut back, you know, when a business, when we're, when we're really a business, the one way a business can offset losses is you come out with a new product. You market it, you know, you develop something, you sell it, you got the new marbles, you got the new, whatever it's going to be. We don't have that, we sell service, so if we sharpen our service and make it even better, it's not going to really do much on the revenue side. So sadly, I think, I know what we want, but I think we have to look at the bottom line, and I don't know if I'm prepared to do it tonight, make suggestions, but there are areas that maybe we'll have to forestall for another year. So, you know, we just can't keep on running the speed that we are. So we just can't keep on running the speed that we are, even though it may not be that fast. But I don't want to take anything away from public safety, fire, the facilities that the residents use. Those would be the top three things for me.
And I concur. Public safety, absolutely, number one. I know the issue of full-time security at City Hall is going to be coming back to us, something really important, emergency preparedness, just something like so simple. And I can't remember the exact situation, but I think, like, Lost Hills or something asked the city if we could put barricades out. It was something recently. I don't even really remember, it was recent, and we didn't have it. It was just something like the city didn't have, and it's come up over the years, like certain signage and roadblocks and things that, like, a city our size should have. Not a huge investment, but something that we should have. So I know we're always looking at, like, the big picture with public safety, the sheriff's contract, but there's some little things, too, that we need to add. So I want to make sure that that's done this year, too. And I have to remember what the example was. Oh, I.
What it was is when Malibu Canyon closed down?
Yes.
And the request was for city staff to close it down. But it was outside of our jurisdiction one, and then it's not just the barricades, it's also the staff to be able to have somebody be there throughout the evening and so forth, to monitor. So again, it's staffing that is stretched throughout the community, taking care of other landslides and debris flows, but also then the barricades outside of our jurisdiction.
But also, like, the speed detecting devices, not a big expense, but really, I heard was making a big difference when we put them up in the certain areas. So we should order more of those. Again, not a big expense, but things that can really make a difference with public safety. So I think there's huge consensus. I know we talk about events. I didn't have a chance earlier to mention that David and I toured the community center today, and it's unbelievable. So, so excited for that. And I think we're actually going to be able to make some money on that center with facility rentals. So I see that as a plus. Looking at more events that have, like, a cost recovery, you know, our events are very reasonable, but I think sometimes, for some events, people might be willing to pay a little more. So just looking at things like that. So I think there's a big consensus from all of us. Let's see.
I mean, I think it would have been, I would just say this, it would have been nice to have, I don't know, was something else in the report? It's just such an open-ended question. I don't know. It just was very hard to think about this without some guidance.
Well, if I can jump in, we were actually looking for this to be more of a discussion, so I'd like to just keep this discussion going. We're taking notes here, absolutely, public safety, a big item, I think, for everybody. I think we're in consensus on that. One of the things that was in the staff report was, we're also looking to know how to pay for these things. So a couple of things, like, if we're adding events, and our Fourth of July event is kind of in question right now, because we don't have a location or details or that sort of thing, that might be an area, maybe we.
That's going to come back.
Cut the Fourth of July and add something else. I'm just, we're, maybe we don't want to get into the exact discussions of them. But I'm saying, for all of these things, we've got to figure out what comes out, because it can't go back in. Now, there is an alternative, and I don't recommend it, and I'm confident that Councilmember Shapiro doesn't recommend it. Right now, we've saved about 65% of our general fund annual expenses in our reserves. We have a resolution that says we can go down to 50%. So there is a little bit of money there as a buffer, but that's meant for a hard time, an unanticipated event. I don't think we should be spending that at this point in time, we're not at that, I don't believe we're at that level. So again, with each idea that we have of what we want to add, I know it's hard, but we've got to figure out how we're coming up with that. And I'll just say that we've talked about things like, just way outside the box. We looked at a cannabis business. Obviously, we decided against that. There has been discussions at the county level of additional taxes, and that brings open the door of additional city taxes. There's other ways to raise money, but just, we want to get you guys thinking about those and ask for any ideas that you can think of, because we don't think of all of this stuff.
Well, several years running, I've asked for analysis of the transient occupancy tax, because those are very popular, because the residents don't pay anything. And if we raised it, you know, 1%, it would bring in a significant amount of revenue, and it would not deter people from staying in our hotels versus other cities. Obviously, we can't raise it too high, but 1% would be fine. And I never, we never heard any analysis after that. So I'd like to see that. Those almost never fail in cities, because, like I said, the residents don't pay for it.
And the other thing I want to see is, we're working on more economic development efforts to bring the appropriate businesses to the community. Ed and I, along with staff, are, you know, hoping to bring back to council possibly some changes in some really simple things that would make Old Town more business-friendly. I mean, we don't want to have these vacancies, looking at different areas throughout the city, that if there's something slight in our code that's preventing certain types of businesses from coming here. So I think, really, you know, economic development efforts will definitely help our bottom line.
Yeah, I was going to chime in on that also. You know, it doesn't happen overnight, unfortunately, but the idea is to cultivate an economic zone community of businesses, of like-minded businesses, whether it's biotech. We're going to take the advice of some of the realtors, the commercial lenders, commercial realtors. But I know I mentioned this once before, that a lot of people drive downtown for some of these businesses. Then they don't want to drive downtown, they want to do it here, and they live here. So we can obtain, and it was recommended to us to do this, a substantial amount of businesses and recruit them, which shouldn't be very hard, because the realtors will be the one, the commercial realtors would be the ones to do that. So we're going to put the pedal to the metal on that. And that'll be a long-lasting effect, too.
Exactly. David?
I was just going to say, for the subcommittee, if you can look to finding businesses that have their point of sale or point of origin here, as opposed to another state or another location, but yet have a big footprint here, I think that would really help.
And we're actually, and we're reaching out to some of the, we're reaching out to some businesses within the community who have that, to actually learn more about why they are in Calabasas, what brought them here, and just some of their experiences, because we want to make sure we're cultivating these relationships with our businesses so that they don't leave, so.
Would you mind if I make another comment?
No, of course.
You know, just thinking about, as a city, you know, I said we don't sell anything, we sell services, and we're very, very good at that. But there's no harm in selling this zoning. And Facebook and social media give people ideas that this is a good community to not only work but to live, and it's not interfering with residential property. It's going to be in a zone area that will fit in. So it's not going to be uncomfortable or a threat to anybody. We're just going to reconfigure it a little bit and explore that and bring it to council, and hopefully, we can do that quickly.
Does anyone have anything to add?
Thank you for all the thoughts and ideas. It'll help us when we start our fund meeting soon.
Great. I don't have any speaker cards, so there's no members of the public wishing to speak. And staff and budget subcommittee has the direction from council? Okay, great. We're going to move on to informational reports, the check register for the period of February 3rd to 16th, 2024. Are there any questions? Nope, okay. Any task force reports? We'll start with James.
Uh, no.
Peter?
Well, just to get it on the record, we did meet with the Community Center Task Force on March 15th. On March 16th, the budget met. On March 26th, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy met. And on, oh, these are all February, not March. I know what month it is. Yeah, February. February 28th, also today, our budget committee met once again.
David?
Just following up on the budget committee meetings, today was a special meeting, part one, I believe, with Site Logic on a potential solar and sustainability plan for the city and part of our, a number of our facilities, which was a good meeting. Also today, or do you want to talk?
No, you can talk.
Today, Mayor Protam and I, Mayor Weintraub and I, met with Erica and her whole staff. We went out, as mentioned, to the community center. It is the RIST Task Force, is that correct? RIST? Okay, just wanted to make sure. And that was beyond exciting to see the transformation already. I haven't been out there like others in quite a while, and I think it's going to just be incredible. And that is the March 16th grand opening, I know that for the public. Also, I've attended a number of SCAG meetings, I was appointed to a couple committees. There's a scholarship for high school students, so I was appointed to that committee, which will meet shortly and provide a $4,000 scholarship to at least two LA County high school students, hopefully someone from our high schools. Attended Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting, and I attended with Councilmember Albrecht a celebration for the Valley Economic Alliance as well, which was nice. And a diversity and inclusion meeting, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the city manager have anything to report? Oh, I, yeah, you want to? Oh, congratulations on your reappointment. Do you want to tell everyone what it is, so I don't butcher it?
It's just the COG, our COG, appointed, reappointed myself as the representative for our five cities, the regional council, our district is 44.
For SCAG?
SCAG, yes.
Great, thank you. Kendon?
Just one item, Mayor. Next week, the LA County Sheriff's Department is hosting their annual meeting with city managers. It's an opportunity for us to hear some of the, from the sheriff himself, and then also from the, in general, the department on what's happening. But it is also the first glimpse that we get at the potential increases for the sheriff contract for the upcoming year. And so we'll have some more information that will be shared with the council and as well as we start looking at the budget forecasting. But to put that in perspective, just going back to the last item, so currently, our sheriff contract is about 5.8 million. So that requires our entire property tax, our entire utility gas tax, and our utility phone tax to cover that sheriff contract. So I just want to put that in context for our residents that understand that this council invests heavily in public safety. Public safety accounts for more than 25% of our budget. And if you just look at those three revenue sources, out of all of our revenue sources, just those three, it's required to cover our sheriff's contract. So that's a big amount. But again, we invest in public safety, because we know that's important, and we know that's what our community wants us to do. So we'll have more on the numbers next week on that.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any requests for future agenda information items? With that, we will adjourn, the city council will adjourn to a regular meeting scheduled on Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.